All right, good evening, everybody. We're going to start. I have a question called the meeting open. My name is Zachary Carron. I'm the chairman of the board. To my left, we have Nicole Skylisten, who's our office manager, Greg Logan, the vice chair, Jason Quinn, the clerk, Jonathan Gale was a member, Michelle Lima, who's a member, Peter Carron, who's a member, and Margaret Mitchell. She is the attorney for the town zoning board. And first, if you could all please rise for me to pledge the meeting. Okay, and before we get into the business here, I just want to say for the public and for the camera and for the board as well, our next meeting for this case, based on everyone's availability that we all have, is going to be Tuesday, October 15th, at 7:00 PM, and that will be here. 7:00 PM, correct. Okay, so before we begin, I feel the first thing I want to address is the site visit that did not go as planned, I'm sure. That is something, as far as I know, every butter was notified about how the visit did not go through as planned. I just want to address that. So what happened was, there wasn't going to be enough visibility from the road or any entrance point for the public to see anything besides some brush and trees. And due to the fact that there was no parking there, we didn't feel comfortable, for safety concerns, having the police shut down part of the road or block off part of the road for traffic, for parking, just so the people could just stand on the curb and just look at some brush. We felt like it wasn't fair to tie up the town's money with that or the public's time, because I didn't want, personally, I didn't want anybody to show up to that meeting and say, "Well, you know, there's nothing really here for us to see." Fisher, like here, you guys do want to discuss future site visits and how we can go about doing that in the future?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Carron. Everybody here?
No.
How's that? I'll hear that switch work. Yeah, Christopher Agostino, counsel for Strawberry Hills Estates. I had spoken to Fisher about the site visit when we got the notice that was canceled. And it was actually, as I think you know, a surprise to us. We understood the concern regarding a lack of availability for parking in the site. So our proposed solution for that is to come up with some common meeting space where maybe we could all meet at Town Hall or meet in this parking lot. And then if, maybe a couple of days before the scheduled site visit, we had a general sense of the number of people that wanted to attend, we could either just shuttle people to the site using Fisher's vehicles, vehicles from his company, or we could rent a van and have people shuttle to the site. So that was how we proposed to resolve concerns about a lot of people parking right on the road. The other concern about what's visible and what's not visible. So generally, what we do with site visits is we'll mark the roadway with, or the proposed road for the site with stakes. The surveyor goes out there, trudges through the brush, and marks the road. I've never seen anything beyond that. Site visits are generally uncomfortable experiences where you are trudging through brush. And unless you have, you know, an engineering background or a sense of the site, there really isn't that much that you can garner from it. So we generally don't go through the trouble of clearcutting a site just so you can see what it looks like. We generally preserve the vegetation. So, you know, so long as everyone understands that the site visit is going to be trudging through brush, and there are some areas that, you know, are heavily wooded, they're welcome to attend, obviously, at their own risk, and you can get them to the site, you know, by the method that I proposed.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I just want to make sure you guys did understand my concerns, though. I just didn't want people showing up and finding out what we can't walk in there and see anything. So I just wanted to make, I don't want anyone to come up and feel that their time was wasted, that's all.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So do we want to, I know you started with a scheduling. Do we want to talk scheduling?
Sure.
While we're on the subject. I know, you know, you mentioned October 15th, which is another two months from now. And we had a little bit of an interval between the last hearing and today, and obviously, summer vacations and schedules and whatnot. So that's understandable. But generally, during the interval, there's a little bit more in terms of communication, either from the board's experts or from town personnel, or additional comments from additional boards. And I know that there were comments that were generated from other boards, formal comments, that we just received this evening. And totally understandable, these things happen. But I think, you know, maybe if we could really maybe plan out a roadmap with dates pursuant to which things might be submitted and circulated, and then also we could talk about having a work session, at least with one member of the board, to discuss what's discussed tonight, some of the comments that we've received from other boards, some of the comments we've received from the butters, and maybe we can schedule that as well.
Sure. Both of which were on my plan to discuss that as well. I've decided that to allow everyone here on the board time to look at documents, whether it's from the butters or whether it's from you guys or from other town boards, two weeks before the public hearing will be the deadline to submit something. Does that sound reasonable for you guys?
For the public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think what I would like to understand first is, would there be an opportunity for a work session?
Yes.
During that interval? And then, because my concern is that depending on the date of the work session, we may want to revise plans further.
Right.
And then from there, it could be presented two weeks prior to the October 15th hearing, and then we could have a nice productive hearing on the 15th.
Okay. So that being said, just so we're clear here, everyone here on the board, only the voting members should be attending, not should be, but at least one should be coming to the meeting. So if it doesn't work for everybody, that's okay. Yeah, so we're going by the dates that are on our plan right here, right in front of us. How's the second week of September for you guys? The two days that are work for everybody here on the board will be either the 10th or the 12th. That'd be Tuesday or Thursday.
Any particular time? I mean, generally, sometimes during the day. Yes, when in September? The 10th of the 12th is the second week of September. The week of the ninth.
Is that work for you guys?
Just goes to bill.
And I assume the evening will work best for everybody? 6 o'clock, okay. All right, so why don't we do the 6 o'clock on the 12th work?
That would work.
Okay.
And just, it would be a Town Hall?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
September 12th? 6:00 PM, your first working session.
Only one member from the board shows up.
Right.
Yep, the public invited, but now there's no public input.
Right, so that, just if they're, if they're, if they're, if they're, the public can't attend those meetings, there's just no public input given at that time. So you can come, take notes, hear whatever you'd like to hear. We just, at those meetings, we save the public hearing for when the developers cannot give any kind of input. So you are all welcome to attend. It's just that at that point, it's just strictly for the board and the developer to be discussing anything we need to discuss.
A single member of the board. And just, every board has different procedures and protocols as far as work sessions and how they like to do it. What I found productive, just so that there's a very clear process for anyone that's interested in terms of butters, is that the board votes to appoint one member this evening, and we know who that member is. That member is voted to attend a work session to discuss and hear what the applicant's thoughts are with respect to what has been discussed during the meeting. And then what usually happens is the member of the board gives a report to the board and to the butters at the next public hearing and debriefs on the discussion and what was had. But it should be made very clear, no decisions of any substance are made by that one board member. So it's just an opportunity to try to work through technical aspects of the proposal that sort of require everybody to huddle around a plan, to huddle around a pile of stormwater management council, or that sort of thing.
Okay, so I'll make the motion that we appoint Greg Logan.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, sounds good?
Yep, that sounds good for scheduling and procedures.
Okay, thank you. So the first thing I would like to read into the minutes. Oh, yes, before we begin, I would just make a motion that by 9:30 we adjourn tonight.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So this was a memo given to the zoning board of appeals from Mallory, who is our town administrator. This is dated July 30th, 2019. "After your first public hearing on the Strawberry Fields development, I had the opportunity to discuss my original comments with the developer. These included increased protection for the wetlands and rural pools in the area, as well as considering condominiums or some other type of homes rather than traditional single-family homes. I cited needs specifically for options for young professionals as well as the elderly looking to downsize yet remain in their hometown. Mr. Heshin seemed amenable to changing the development from all single-family homes to varying housing stock. He said that the zoning board of appeals can provide a directive to him to create an alternate concept that would take these concerns into account. In a second meeting, we further discussed an updated concept that I requested he share with the zoning board of appeals. This included townhouses and a small cottage-style type, a small cottage-style development in addition to the single-family homes. While this ultimately increases the total number of housing units originally proposed, there are increased protections for rural pools, which I was extremely happy to see, and more green space areas throughout the entire development, including a wooded buffer between a few homes on Country Hill Drive and the proposed development. I have one remaining concern with this new concept, and that is that there are three different areas of the project. Perhaps this would constitute, at the mass housing level, three separate projects. It is worth a call to Town Council to check if this new plan, separated into three areas with three types of housing, is something that would pass muster under Chapter 40B. That being said, the ZBA has expressed interest in seeing developers provide mixed housing stock, and I believe this plan does just that, offering differing options for a variety of potential homeowners." So before we talk to the developer about their experience with this, what do you guys think about this?
Next person, next over to the other side of the house, doesn't maintain their property, kind of gives it a problem, then it doesn't fall onto the developer's property, falls onto the committee. So I'm not for townhouses. I do like the idea of breaking it down into three, if the public is interested in doing something like that. And we'll go with that in our meetings, but that's one of the concerns I do have.
Okay, thank you. Next?
I would have a concern as well. Depending upon the types of units that are going to be developed, if the number's going to be increased.
John, do you mind if I talk to you for that? Thank you.
Okay. Depending upon the number of units that are proposed and going to be increased once we hear from the developer, I would be concerned about the size of the units, the land space for each unit, how the units are going to be placed with regard to wetlands as well, and also how that affects other, which technically, on one level, you know, may not be something we have to think about, but I'm sure the residents who are all here would think about, what's it going to do in terms of usage for other town services? Whether it's water, sewage, whatever it would be. Because the more units you have and the more people you're putting in there, logic tells us all that that's going to put more stress on everything throughout the town. So having said that, I'd like to hear that information from the developer, but I would really be interested in hearing what the developer has to say with regard to the number of affordable units, the types of affordable units as well that are going to be there, so that they're still keeping the structure of the 40B concept.
Anyone else on the board? Any questions or comments?
I agree, Greg. We've never had success with townhouses or duplexes. As a matter of fact, the, I don't know, we have not had success, we've had actually court arguments over them. One of them being on William Street, where a chain fence went down the middle and became an isolate. So I would feel the same way that Ray expressed, that we can include townhouse-looking styles, but they'd have to stay as one owner.
I'm wondering, before we even go too far, whether or not, based on the suggestion of Mallory Amstein, whether or not the attorney for the town has had an opportunity to look into this yet and whether we have an answer.
Dan, do you mind passing away to Margaret? When I reviewed this memo from the town administrator, my initial comment was that it's hard for me to give an accurate answer because I haven't seen the proposed plan. So without really visually being able to see it, I'm only guessing at what it is she was describing. But in general, a 40B project is based on the land area that is involved in the application. And if you have different styles of homes, that's able to happen within one 40B development. It's not limited to one particular style of homes. It's not even limited to one particular type of ownership of homes. You could have mixed ownership, where you could have a portion of the project that's rental, that's a rental version of the project, and a portion of the project is homeownership. So I don't believe this is going to be a problem, but I can't comment 100% without seeing the proposed plan.
Is there anything else before I turn it over to the developer? Okay. Fisher or Chris? Do you have your ready?
Good evening, my name is Fisher Hasham, I'm the developer. Well, first of all, we didn't propose anything until we had a request from you, and we're happy to propose some ideas, that's your wish, on mixed housing development. This is not unusual. Actually, as a matter of fact, there is a similar situation in Lakeville that we're doing right now, that is mixed. Actually, it's more mixed than what we might, what might happen here because they have for-rent and for-ownership development there. But we're not proposing anything for rent here, or we're not interested in proposing that either. But what happens is, each different styles, like we had in Lakeville, there is different condo associations responsible for the maintenance of the townhouses or the cottage style. And wherever there is common expense, if there is such thing, like such as sewer drainage plant or sewer pump or something, they all contribute to that. But they all are, each condo association is responsible for its area. And where there are single-family homes, there'll be homeowner association for that space. So if it is your wish, we'll be happy. I just, I took it, you know, I heard from the comments from Mallory, and I took it upon myself to brainstorm and come up with an idea, review it with her, but I didn't want to propose it until I had a request from you.
Right.
And now that I, if that's your wish, I'm happy to propose something, and maybe we can bring it over to the work session. And we were hoping also to receive some comments from the review engineers to see if we can also take that into account. The advantage of having a mixed use home is you have slightly more open space, and it really gives character to the project, to the whole development. And because it also addresses different needs, there are definitely need, a need for, other than single-family homes. There are young starting, couples starting out, that they might want, might not be able to afford a single-family home, or, you know, different, there are different styles and different demands from the market. As for affordable part of it, the same percentages must apply, you know, for, like, for single-family homes, there needs to be 25% of that section affordable. For condos, I mean, townhouses, 25% of the townhouses need to be affordable. A cottage is the same thing, so it just flows. Now, if there is, you know, it's also open for discussion. If it's the view of the board that there is more need for affordables in certain sections, we can discuss it and see what, how we can work together.
Okay, thank you. So just a point of order. Margaret, is this something that we have to officially vote on for our new proposal? How would we do this?
My recommendation is that you not take a vote at this time. I'm not sure that I completely agree with the developer's idea that the town needs to make a request for it to submit any changes. I personally believe that the board's responsibility is to review what is presented to it, provide comments. I think you've given some type of indication of various members' thoughts here, and that should be sufficient probably for Mr. Hasham to move forward. And I'm sure this could also be brought up a little bit preliminarily at the working session as well, in light of the fact that GZA did provide comments, which I do understand you just received tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I agree. We, I didn't, I wasn't waiting for a formal request. I just wanted direction from you. Because it gets confusing if we have five different plans and just wanted direction from you that, okay, we would like you to just explore that possibility, that's all.
Okay.
Just to get a better sense, though, for the design team's benefit, the only negatives I heard were concerns about long-term viability, long-term maintenance, the ability to ensure that the townhomes are properly maintained. Fisher spoke to that. But I just would reiterate that I think the condo association management is a lot more sophisticated than it has been in years past in terms of how these things are managed, how they're funded, how they're leading if there's an issue with maintenance. So hopefully, if we neutralize that concern as far as the overall proposal to maybe provide more open space, provide varying building typology in terms of townhouses, condo, and single-family, is that aspect appealing to everyone on the board? If you were to just say that there's no issue with maintenance, if that wasn't a concern, you could get over that, would you be more interested in seeing varying typology based on the concerns of the town? Or is the board's preference for single-family homes? I mean, is there just a way to express, so that we have a little better guidance as to which direction to go?
I think my biggest concern would be, I like the idea of the lesser footprint for all the houses and everything, and the townhomes. But how much would we increase the number of units? And with that being said, more stress on the water supply, more stress on the fire department, things like that. So we're going from 92 to whatever number it turned out to be. It's great that we're decreasing the footprint of buildings, but we're adding more units. That's my biggest concern with the mixed, the mixed usage, right? Do we have any idea what the number would go to from the 92 at this point, or do we have any ideas roughly? And the one thing? That's my, that's my big concern, stress on the town services.
Right, and I think in preliminary discussions, you know, with the water department, when you're changing building typology, you're changing the audience of buyers. You know, we mentioned empty nesters, young professionals that haven't yet started a family. So where, you know, but again, ultimately, these types of things are for the board to consider. But where you're talking about a building typology that would attract a different type of buyer, the idea would be that it would use less water. We have one person showering versus a family shower. It would use less services, where you have, you know, an aging couple that their children just fled the nest type thing. So that's something to take into account as far as your concerns about impact on town services. And I think, my sense was, that that was kind of where the town administrator was kind of going with it as well. So just all things to consider, and, you know, appreciate the feedback. And this is all very helpful to us to decide which direction to go in, because as everyone stated, we can't have multiple plans floating around. I think it's important to commit in one direction or another.
Right, so I personally, I think, before we discuss this further, I want you to read in the other documents from the other town boards, and then let the butters speak on this behalf, because we do have to give the developer a chance to address the butters on this as well. So I think before we come to any kind of, we want this, we want that, I want to, like I said, talk about what other town boards and the public has to say before we consider that. Is that, does that agree with everybody?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the first I would like to read into the minutes, Strawberry Fields, initial comments from Jeffrey Kuhn, who's the superintendent of the water district. This is dated July 1st, 2019, that we received this. "The district will acquire a tap at Strawberry, at Strawberry and at the Somerset Ave entrance. It is possible if the preferred loop for this development should come from the Somerset Ave and Huckleberry cul-de-sac, otherwise Cranberry. It can be used as an alternative, but not preferred. We would like to have Country Hill Estates loop as well from the Strawberry cul-de-sac and Country Hill cul-de-sac. This is an area of concern for the district due to pressure and volume issues that already exist. We would like to propose an upgrade of the water mains to 12-inch ductile iron pipe from Dunkin' Donuts on Somerset Ave to Center Street. The water district will not allow any outside irrigation. Wells must be used for all irrigation purposes." And that is the, at the end of that memo from the water, Fisher. The next, I have a document dated July 18th addressed to us, and this is coming from the Board of Health and the Dighton Storm Water Regulations. They say we offer the following comments. "One, the streams on the site are considered tributaries to a surface water supply," and from this they say Zone A. "This subdivision plan indicates stormwater discharges in the Zone A were directed toward the streams. There is a strong likelihood of a significant impact occurring to the Zone A, taking into account the high density of houses in the development, poor soils, and shallow water table. Stormwater discharges are directed toward Zone A, should be removed and set back from the receiving water and receive the highest and best practical method of treatment." And then they give the citation from the Mass Stormwater Handbook. "Stormwater discharges to a Zone," I believe that's a 1, "or Zone A are prohibited." "Number two, the water table on the site is fairly shallow. The USDA soils mapping for the area indicate water table depths of 24 to 72 inches below grade. Preliminary soils by the engineer indicate depth to water table of 36 to 66 below grade. There are only a few preliminary holes across the entire site. We are requesting more holes to be excavated prior to the design in the presence of the health agent or a third party across from the entire site for the homes, roadway, and drainage basins, uh, drainage basins, excuse me." "Three, given the shallow water table on the site, there are several construction components which may pose stormwater problems, health problems, or create public hazards if not taken into consideration." And this is 3A. "The sewer main may be very deep. This will pose problems for construction given the need for shoring and dewatering." "3B, the roadways need to be above the water table to avoid bleeding onto or through the pavement. Either of these conditions could lead to freezing, causing a public hazard." "3C, the drainage basins need to maintain required separations to the water table per the Stormwater Management Handbook." "3D, basement floors may be in the water table. This is extremely automatic, as some pumps are not a reliable solution, and given the lot sizes, sub-pump discharges would be too near to other homes. There should be no discharge of sub-pumps or foundation drains onto the roadway or into any drainage system component for the public, for protection of public health." And then, next point, four. "It appears that there will be a connection from the drainage basin on drainage to..." basin on Drainage Lot A to the existing drainage system on Route 138. This will require permission from the Mass Department of Transportation, as will the curb cut for the roadway." And then this, summarizing, "The Board of Health is recommending that the project design incorporates the following items. A, soil moorings be performed every two hundred feet along the entire proposed roadway. B, a soil mooring at the location of every proposed home. C, every basement floor must be above the water table. D, the proposed roadway be a minimum of eighteen inches above the designed water table. E, all soil testing should be performed in the presence of a third party or the Board of Health agent. And then F, given that Dyton is a right-to-farm community, which allows animals on the property, small lots with chickens, roosters, goats, and other animals pose noise and burning problems. Larger lots and more space between homes to reduce potential conflicts would be preferable. The groundwater is a serious issue, and we need to protect the residents of the new homes as well as the town wetlands and water supply. It is imperative for the entire project concept, from houses to driveways to streets to drainage systems, incorporate best management practices in order to protect the public health." Thank you. And it's side Tom Pilling, and he's from, he's the Board of Health, Board of Health Agent, excuse me, that we have for the town. And then, excuse me, the one from Jeffrey Kuhn, and it looks like he sent another one. And this is received August first. So I'll just read this one. "The district will acquire a tap at Strawberry at Somerset Ave. If it is possible, the preferred loop for this development should come from the Somerset Ave and Huckleberry cul-de-sac, otherwise Cranberry. It can be, it's the same, yeah, it was some change in there. Yeah. Can be used as an alternative but not preferred. We would like to have Country Hill Estates looped as well from the Strawberry cul-de-sac and Country Hill cul-de-sac. We realize the obstacles that this represents in finding a super partner that would allow for easement. This is an area of concern for the district due to pressure and volume issues that already exists. We would also like to propose an upgrade of the water mains to twelve-inch ductile iron pipe from Dunkin' Donuts on Somerset Ave to Center Street. An alternative for this would be providing land, would be providing land to build a two-million-gallon storage tank. A fire flow test must be performed not before September. The Water, the Dyton Water District will not allow any outside irrigation. Wells must be for all irrigation purposes." And before I read GZA findings, do you guys want to address those concerns, or would you like me to read the last input that we have?
Sorry. Who's findings? The Board of Health findings?
Well, yeah, from what I read so far, the Board of Health, Water, and the Sewer.
So everything that I heard mentioned from the Board of Health referenced state stormwater management regulations and principles that we adhere to in development in terms of making sure foundations are properly constructed and taken into account the water table. I know Fisher's team has constructed projects in some very difficult sites, so this site is not nearly as difficult as some of the other ones as far as the water table is concerned. So that's not a concern from our perspective, but to the extent all of the other regulations that were cited are of concern to this board or the Board of Health, we have to comply with them anyway. We can't get waivers from those. Those are state regulations. The concern about Dyton being a right-to-farm town, this is a 40B project, and it will be subject to a homeowners' association, and it would be our plan that the homeowners' association would have reasonable restrictions on, obviously, the type of animals that could be, you know, owned by homeowners in the development. As with, you know, if you live in a condo, you're not going to have a rooster in the hallway in the morning. It's the same idea. So nothing that I heard in those proposals is of any concern. We did meet, at this board's suggestion, the design team did meet with the Dyton Water District and with the Sewer Department, which, you know, as I said at the outset of the last hearing, is not something we would ordinarily do in a 40B project. We would be before this board, we would just wait to hear the comments. But because these issues are such a serious concern, we went before those boards, and we heard that feedback. And we're going to continue to explore options to try to determine whether or not there are things we can do to help mitigate some of the impacts they have described. The one that I heard twice, as far as a looped water main to Country Hill, you know, if someone's willing to grant us easement, then we would be willing to install a looped water main, but my feeling is that no one would be willing to grant us easement. So our project does not impact water quality and water pressure in the area to the point where it would support the denial of a 40B development. However, if there are concerns about it from a convenience perspective or from a comfort perspective, then certainly will help if someone were to grant us easement, but that's not something that could be a condition or permit. But we have also spoken to those departments about how to study, you know, potential ways to help Dyton in a broader sense, study their water availability and sewer availability with an eye towards five, ten, twenty years down the road, and not just as it relates to this project. Because as we heard at the last hearing, as we sit here tonight and when this project will be built, there is adequate supply, adequate capacity, adequate pressure. The quality will and has to be maintained, but many of the concerns were with a long-term planning concern. Long-term, yes, there are concerns. So how can we help with the long-term planning? And that's some of the things that we're going to continue to discuss, to see whether or not there's an appropriate condition for this permit that would be the type of condition that would mitigate some of those concerns.
All right, thank you.
Then the other piece that we have from the town is from Peter Williams, who's the engineer for GZA. This is dated July thirty-first. "Dear board members, this letter presents the results of GZA's review of the comprehensive permit application and definitive subdivision plans submitted for Strawberry Fields Estates residential subdivision. The application and plans were reviewed with respect to the applicable sections of Dyton zoning bylaw, Town of Dyton Planning Board rules and regulations, and general engineering practices. Materials reviewed by the GZA included the following: Plans titled Comprehensive Permit 40B Subdivision Strawberry Fields Estates, seven sixty-six Somerset Ave, Dyton, Massachusetts, zero two seven one five dated May thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, prepared by Jacob Bristol Engineering of Northeastern Massachusetts, prepared by, prepared for Strawberry Fields Estates LLC of Southeastern Massachusetts. And the comprehensive permit application, Strawberry Fields, Dyton Mass, dated May thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, prepared by Delphic Associates LLC of New Bedford, Massachusetts." The following presents GZA's review comments. One, "The project narrative indicates that the southwest sixty-six point two acre parcel will not be developed and indicates that there, indicates that it is anticipated that the parcel will be designed as open space. Information on how the designation will occur should be submitted." Two, "Zone A and C to a surface water supply." Three, "Colored version of NH ESP map in provided tab eleven of the application binder should be provided." Four, "Stormwater management drainage calculations should be submitted." Five, "Proposed grading of lots eighty-three and eighty-four could divert additional runoff to the abutting lot at eight hundred Somerset Avenue." Six, "Detailed stormwater calculations should be submitted to confirm that the proposed infiltration basin number three C will not impact eight hundred Somerset Ave." Seven, "The proposed outlet for infiltration basin three A is a direct connection to the Catch Basin of the west side of Somerset Avenue. Direct connections to Catch Basins should be avoided, and is not, and it is not likely that the Massachusetts Highway Department will approve this type of connection. The drain outlet from infiltration basin three A should connect directly to the drain, drain manhole, excuse me, in Somerset Avenue." Eight, "It appears that the sheet runoff from Cranberry Lane will increase runoff volumes to Somerset Avenue, which may not be acceptable to the Mass Highway Department." Nine, "A profile for the detention basin on the north side of Cranberry Lane should be shown on the plans. The profile should indicate calculated peak water levels during the severe, during severe storm events. The outlet for this detention basin discharges directly to the wetland without erosion protection." Ten, "Emergency outlets should be provided for all infiltration, infiltration basins." Eleven, "The existing grade at the downgrading discharge point of all infiltration and detention basins should be shown on the plans." Twelve, "Landscaping and lighting plans like G twenty-three should be provided for the entire project." Thirteen, "The project may be subject to an earth removal permit." Fourteen, "The applicant should confirm the capacity of existing sewer system to handle additional sewer flows." Fifteen, "Sidewalk ramps should be provided for the sidewalks, and location should be indicated on the plans." Sixteen, "Hydraulic calculations for the site improvements should be submitted as stipulated in Wetlands Protection Act regulations and the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Stormwater Management Standards." Seventeen, "Limits of Zone A, Zone C surface water protection and outstanding water, outstanding resource water areas within the site should be shown on the plan. Information to confirm compliance of the proposed project with state regulations three-ten CMR twenty-two and three-fourteen CMR four protecting these areas should be submitted." Eighteen, "Test pit data locations for all test pits should be shown on the plans." Eighteen, "The drainage calculation should provide a design point at seven eighty-four Somerset Avenue." Twenty, "The drainage calculation should confirm the capacity of the downgrading drain pipe system to its outlet point on the east side of Somerset Avenue." Twenty-one, "Catch basin inlet capacity calculations should be provided." Twenty-two, "Groundwater malady calculations may be required." Twenty-three, "A minimum of forty-four percent TSS removal should be removed prior to the infiltration of stormwater runoff." Twenty-four, "The proposed water system must comply with the requirements of the White Dyton Water District." Twenty-five, "The proposed sanitary sewer system must comply with the requirements of the Dyton Sewer Department." And last, twenty-six, "Should be provided for the proposed sewer pump station. Should any of the board members have any questions on the information presented in this letter, please feel free to contact me," and then he gives his number, and then his, you know, address for CPA, and it's signed Peter Williams, the senior project manager.
I know, we're just... No, I don't think we have anything on the Sewer Department, no.
Diane from the Sewer Department did come by. She said that she has met with you, but she hasn't presented. Actually, Tom Ferry's here. Do you want to speak on that?
I didn't see you speaking, sorry, Tom.
Tom Ferry, Detective for Sewers. We did meet this vision and one of his engineers, Mr. Driscoll. Very good, by the way, based on, and we had a lot of concerns.
Would you mind just holding the microphone? Thank you. Okay, we couldn't hear you.
We couldn't hear you. I am sure too, I'm sorry, I get it.
We both had some concerns, and we had a good interaction with them. Our meeting last meeting was July twenty-second. We haven't met again to prove the minutes that we had. So I brought tonight just some bullets to share. So like I said, we met with Fisher and his engineer, Jeffrey Driscoll, about the private of the Strawberry Fields. They had stated an increase from ninety-two to ninety-four three bedroom homes. I'm working on that, the floors are two entrances on a Massachusetts highway. The next meeting with the CBAs tonight, Mr. Heston stated that they do not have a sewer design yet. I don't think he's still got that yet, right? Right. Mr. Heston also stated that based on the Title V numbers, it'll need about thirty thousand gallons per day. That was based on the Dyton Woods project. I'm not going to read every, both of them, some of them are redundant. There was also discussion about floors and a number of boxes on gravity versus pump station. We actually had some great discussions in that, which will determine the outcome or the longevity of the project and our town system. Harold also, Superintendent Harold stated that they would really need to look and figure out if they are planning on using that gravity as a, would impact the current pump station, as Mr. Williams also mentioned earlier. At this time, Mr. Fisher is, they are considering that the system will remain privately maintained. However, we're going to be seeing the flow, and we'll have to process that in the future. Harold stated that it would be tied into the municipal system, and best interest of the town would need to be considered. Fisher agreed. Yeah, Fisher also, I don't mean Fisher also already stated that he met with the water department already. We agree with most of the comments that were made in that discussion. We reviewed the plans, discussed regarding elevations, the suddenly entrance of the southern two roads, where some concerns, where some changes may need to be made as the elevation to the highway versus pumping, you know, gravity versus pumping. Our board is currently possibly considering changing engineers in the hot part, which might have a slight delay in communicating with him. But he's waiting for that new name and looking forward to establishing a relationship with him. We're not clear on that yet. Next meeting is not until the last week in August. Harold Superintendent stated to Fisher that the pump station needs to be upgraded. That's the one that's by Dunkin' Donuts that receives everything on one thirty-eight, including the salivation plant and the coal plant, which have pretty big customers already. So like, that's, the station is giving us a little trouble right now also. We were questioning our capacity at that station that I just mentioned. We don't know our capacity or the flow creates at this time and the impacts this will have either. So we need their engineer to help figure out the actual plans coming forward and for us to consider, and also whatever day we can provide for them to come to that. Fisher was also, has his similar rules and regulations. He has them. And also, he looks, Fisher realized that once we have our new engineer, he needs to know the cost affiliated with that, in case that's going to happen. He has the plans that he needed to come to us that night. And that's all we have at this time.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we can continue to record this, Chip. Thank you.
Before we open up to the developer, Mr. Ferry, can we just have a copy of your goal points when you have a chance? I mean, not tonight, obviously, but whenever you have a chance.
Okay.
Any questions or comments right now from the board regarding what we heard before we open up to the developer? Go ahead, if you have any, you like to say, go ahead.
Great. So to continue to present just some of the vital statistics and basic design elements of the project, we have the project's traffic engineer here tonight, Bill Scully, who's going to give a preliminary overview of the findings of our traffic report, which has been submitted to the town's peer review expert for traffic. So the idea would be just to give a general presentation this evening of the conclusions, then obviously the technical memorandum would be subject to peer review, and then the board's engineer peer review for traffic. And the traffic peer review engineer would come before this board and critique the applicant's report at a future hearing, and then we could discuss concerns about traffic further. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bill. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bill Scully.
Thank you.
There's one in the back there. Good evening, my name is Bill Scully. I am from Green International. Turn the board this way. Okay, all right, for the record, my name is Bill Scully. I'm with Green International Affiliates. We have the traffic engineering consultant on the project. It's part of the process, it's typical, and in this process, it went through to request traffic impact and access study on the project. And I know it sounds like there's discussions going on in terms of unit type and all that, but what we studied were ninety-two units of single-family homes. And you probably all received a copy of the traffic report. So that was dated April twenty nineteen. And as was just stated, it has not undergone peer review at this point. We're just waiting for that and work with a peer review consultant. So, I don't know how much detail to really go through. I know it's in general, a little view and all that, but let me, I'll go through a few things, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. So when we do a traffic impact study, purpose of that is, there's a couple of different purposes, though. One certainly is to understand the roadway, the budding network that the project's going to come out to, to access for the project. In this case, Somerset Ave, Route one thirty-eight, under MASTOT jurisdiction. We also, most of the concerns on traffic impact studies in new development is how much traffic is going to come out of this new development and add it to the network. So that's another major purpose of conducting a traffic impact study. And then to assess the site access, the ability of those who ultimately occupy the site, their ability to enter and exit the site. And we make projections as to where they're going to go, turn left, turn right, travel to the northeast, south, and west. And all of that is documented in the traffic report. And we follow generally accepted practices and guidelines that MASTOT follows, national transportation organizations develop. So we go through and we follow, again, generally accepted procedures, the steps in conducting a traffic study, and that includes assumptions and design criteria. We've gone, we go through and collect data, so we collected traffic volumes on Somerset near the site. We collected some peak hour, with the residential development, you'll study the morning and the afternoon, peak period, which is typical to be the peak on the roadway system, mostly related to commuting, the commuting time period, school-related time period. So that's when you'll see your peak, and that's what we tend to try to evaluate the impact. Traffic goes down during the middle of the day. If you're having no problem in the peak time, presumably you'll have no problem in the middle of the day. We research crash information, we collect speed data, we go out to the proposed site drives. This map was in the report, it's just an aerial map, it shows an outline of a site and where the approximate two points of access would be. We'll measure site distances for vehicles approaching this driveway, which is most critical, and then also vehicles leaving the site drive, make an estimate on that. And then we'll forecast traffic. Now, when we do our analysis, we're studying, we're comparing conditions without the project and with the project. While we collect existing information and we do analysis on existing, we'll also be projecting out, in this case, seven years forward. And we'll have a seven-year forward time period to twenty twenty-six without the project and a twenty twenty-six condition with the project. And then we compare what a traffic volume's like, what is operation like, what changes exist. And again, that's another thing that comes out of the impact study is the incremental change. So, let's see, how much detail? I guess I'll just conclude it. And again, I've got the numbers in the report to go over, but essentially, well, we have ninety-two new houses, definitely all occupied. So yes, it's going to add some traffic to the roadway system. Single-family houses, generally, a development would generate between about three-quarters to eight trip, or one trip per unit in the peak hour. So at ninety-two homes, you're going to generate somewhere between eighty and ninety vehicle trips during that peak hour. The peak hour is the sixty-minute time period. Most of the traffic in the morning is leaving the site, most of the traffic in the afternoon is coming back to the site. That's important in terms of are they turning into the site or crossing traffic and turning left or right. We've projected about thirty percent going to the north, about thirty to forty percent going to the south, south to center, and if I remember correctly, fifteen percent east along center, fifteen percent to the west. We project traffic in the direction based on a few different things. We look at the current patterns out there, so we know how the existing traffic in the town, whether it's town traffic or through traffic from other towns, but we know the pattern out there. So in the morning, for an example, on Somerset Ave, sixty percent of the peak hour traffic is headed north, and in the afternoon, about sixty percent is heading south. We also look at census data, and that census data starts to give us an indication of residents of the town, where do they work? And if we know where they work, yes, we're making assumptions, but we can generally identify the path they'll take, the streets that they'll take. So we use that information to develop that estimated pattern. Our findings show traffic can enter and exit the sites either drive, and we've made assumptions on each drive, and that was based on the development layout and the direction of flow that they're going. They'll be able to enter and exit with short delays. Site distances at the driveway exceed, meet or exceed the criteria for both forty-five miles an hour and fifty miles an hour on Somerset Ave. Close speeds on Somerset are forty, forty-five, forty-five more to the north, forty as you're getting down towards Town Hall and the Center Street intersection. Average speed where we measured was up around here at the site, average was about forty-five miles an hour, and high speed was about fifty miles an hour. So we did actually, site distance analysis on both criteria. And let's see, what else? Our recommendations really deal with the site drives, the site drives being stop sign control. Make sure, you know, usually when you construct the new site drives, you're going to do some clearing on the edges, and those should be maintained, signage, landscaping, whatever types of things you do to make the entry nice, you still set back or you set low so that if you've got great site distance now, you don't want to ruin it in the future. Those are really where our recommendations are. And I think, it might have been mentioned earlier, this is a DOT road, so some permitting with DOT is going to have to occur anyways, and then they'll review all this information as well. So I don't anticipate them coming up with anything additional, but you never know with the next meeting. And I'll end there and answer any questions or turn back to you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, please. If you could, I'll give them to you one at a time, ask you to answer them one at a time. The first question is, you mentioned during peak periods roughly eighty-eight vehicles, eighty-eight vehicles. How are you arriving at that? And what I mean by that is, what are you projecting as the number of vehicles in the development? What are you projecting as the number of adults driving those vehicles? Because that makes out to less than one per household during peak period. Where are you getting those numbers?
Yeah, all right, so, all right, let me go through that. Open up the right one. So when we forecast traffic... When we forecast traffic, because, as I said, several steps. So the first one is, how much traffic are we going to generate? So we use models that have been developed and published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And those models are based on hundreds of observations of similar land uses. So we have suburban-type environment, single-family homes, and they've studied, and it has been transportation engineers all over the country. And that data gets reviewed, compiled, analyzed, and models are developed. And for about the last, I've been doing this a little over forty years, probably about that same amount of time, in general, those rates that I mentioned earlier tonight have held pretty solid all through this time. And we've updated, we've collected more data over time, dropped out old data, looked at new data, and you still end up with somewhere in that, three-quarters to one trip per unit. So, so this table right here, which was in the report, so the morning peak hour, ninety-two homes is projected as we run, so we run those models with ninety-two units of housing. We're not looking at how many cars are actually sitting in the neighborhood, how many adults are in the neighborhood. We don't get, we don't need that kind of information. All of our empirical data in the research is based on actual counts of a development, cars going in, cars coming out, how many houses were in that development that produced that pattern, and we develop a rate. And that gets just compiled, as I mentioned, hundreds of research data points, and we end up with a model that then helps us forecast the morning and the afternoon and the daily numbers of trips. So in the afternoon, we're projecting ninety-four vehicle trips for those ninety-two homes, with, again, most of them, fifty-nine of them, entering the site. So now, a common question, or comment that comes up all the time is, well, you've got ninety units, and you know, most of those units probably have two cars, maybe even three cars. Well, all the data that we've observed over the years, you know, myself or other engineers, same characteristics. And what happens is, we're looking at a peak sixty minutes, and not every one of those cars goes out at the same time or in the same hour. And what we, and that's, we've measured that, the federal government has measured that. So we know in the peak hour in the morning, maybe thirty, thirty-three percent of people go to work. And in the hour preceding that peak hour, maybe that number's twenty-eight to twenty-nine percent. And then hour after that peak hour, it might be twenty-five to seventy-seven percent. You know, and you have a spread between five, four AM, five AM, up to nine AM, ten AM, where all the commuters, let's say, eventually go to work. So, so anyway, so that, you know, that comment, well, you have multiple cars, and why aren't two-hundred-and-seventy coming out of there at the same time? Well, it just doesn't happen. And we know it doesn't happen because we've got hundreds of observations that tell us that and data that tells us that. So anyway, so we do use national model. The national model is based on actual data collected at similar land uses. And does that answer that first question?
Well, not yet. So kicking with that part of the question. My, one of my concerns would be where your numbers are coming from in terms of, for example, if I, if the same development were being built in Newton, a water town, and a lot of folks were taking the commuter rail or the green line, then the numbers might be down. So what's the comparison that we use?
Okay, so, again, I mean...
You're referring to hundreds of variables.
That's right, yeah. And I can't list them all, but there are hundreds of data points.
From my perspective, that would be important for us to hear, probably for everyone here, to hear what you're using for justification for this particular project. So I'll leave that with that, and I'll move on. We can get to another conversation.
So you want me to answer the Newton thing or not?
You can answer that now, or we can...
No, let me try and see if that answers that question. All right, so... So, the national database, the ITE database, right now is largely, if not ninety-nine point nine percent, built on suburban locations that have little or no transit. And it might have some transit, but, you know, it's not just a substantial amount of users. So Dyton is perfect example of what that data is based on. If we ever got into the Newtons and the Quincy's and the, you know, Somerville's and even, you know, a little further out, we then, again, remember that census data I talked about, from that we also get information that says, oh, ten percent of the residents use transit to go to work. So we may make some manual adjustments to the rate to account for that, you know, transit use. In this case, we don't. We're not making any reduction on that. And again, we even look at things like, you take transit, but you have to get driven to the transit station, we're not going to make any reduction in the number. So hopefully that answers that question.
So my other question for now is, when you do the traffic study, from the two entrances or exits, whatever you want to call it, from the development, I don't know how far north and south exactly the stop lights are. I'm assuming you've looked at that? Yes, no?
Yes.
My question, my question... Well, if you have, my question is going to be, because this is another thing that makes a big difference to people who are traveling through one thirty-eight or the adjacent areas, is what's the amount of time difference? For example, right now, if you're at that corner stop light up the street here, you can generally get through in one cycle, sometimes two cycles. In order for that to be the same, with the amount of, with the new traffic flow, what has to change? Do we have to change the amount of time that the light is red or green? Or are we now looking to potentially be backed up in four cycles going north and south? Where do we potentially have to look at another traffic solution down the road for that intersection as a result of this? And then the same thing going north?
I don't know if I can answer that fully right here tonight, but the impact, this project is certainly going to add some traffic down into that section. It's going to add in the morning about thirty-five vehicles over the peak hour into that intersection, going southbound, and about twenty-something in the afternoon. Our analysis has shown there is a slight increase in vehicle delay on that approach. Our analysis has also shown very minimal change in overall intersection average delay. Our analysis has also shown very minimal change in overall intersection average delay in operating conditions. Now, that doesn't mean that traffic signal timing changes can't be looked at to see, okay, can you, can you eliminate, if we're increasing delay by three seconds on average at the intersection, can signal timing changes eliminate that? Possibly. I, I'd have to look at that to be able to tell you that exactly. And I also know that, can you do it, what's it, what's it gonna do? If you, if you change certain things, then other things are impacted. So, so, bottom line is, right now, is the analysis has shown very little change due to the project at that intersection in terms of what a particular driver would really feel and perceive. Virtually, the driver's gonna perceive almost nothing different than without the project in the future. It's, it's that close. However, you can, it looks like an old, an old installation. Anyways, I don't know, the state has that on its list. But, signal timing can always be looked at.
That's all I have for right now, thank you.
Alright, so before we turn up the butters, just wanna ask anybody else on the board with any more questions?
Was there, um, any recommendations for horse walk or sidewalk or flashing yellow caution lights?
Along Somerset Avenue? No, we didn't make that recommendation.
How many children were there expecting in this particular project?
How many were?
Children. Would you guys figure residents with children for this vision?
I don't have those numbers.
What do you think residents with children in this project?
The average in other subdivision, we have, we have that survey, in our own subdivision, the average is point three per household, point three children.
Less than one child in our house.
With the playground being across the street, with the playground being across the street at the town hall, any thought, then give into a course walk from there?
No, we haven't thought about it.
Oh, go ahead. Michelle, do you have anything? Jason, go ahead.
I have a question with the, come, make a right out of Country Hill Drive, there's a hill that, that goes up. And can you explain to me how you take that into account with your sightlines? There's been several accidents there over the years, and I know it's a hot topic for certain residents of this town. Kind of explain that to us a little bit more, how you take that into, those sightlines into account?
Well, we did not do site distance measurements at Country Club Drive, but we did it relative to, to proposed site drives. So, I mean, I'll, I'll go back and look at that and get back to you on that, but, but I'll tell you that our approach site distance to proposed drives was four-hundred-and-twenty-five feet or more in all directions. And that meets or exceeds the standard criteria of forty-five or fifty miles an hour. So, I don't know, I, I'd have to look at that specific Country Club Drive, and I can, I can do that and let you know. It does not appear to have an effect on our site drives. So, they may have an issue there, I don't know.
I just have one question too. Obviously, there are two entrance slash exits in and out of the development. Where would, would you, are you guys proposing one bus stop at each, or just one? That's gonna be a huge thing, and we're having kids walk to one bus stop, is a bus gonna stop at two?
I believe just one bus stop is being proposed.
I also have some concern, the hill coming over there, it comes to the hill, I live in this town, there's been three fatalities right here alone. Coming down over the top, have you calculated anything, like a school bus now, we're talking about picking up one-three children per house, ninety-two, so I'm just going with some mathematics there. That bus is gonna be sitting there for a while, and they're saying you've got a four-hundred-and-fifty feet of clearance before you see the red lights on the bus, is that a state?
Okay, so what I would say is...
I'm just concerned about the bus, it's gonna be stopping on one-thirty-eight.
The bus is gonna be higher than what in that...
And we've also had fatalities on, in front of that development, coming up the other side, as well as down the other side.
You're still talking about Country Club Drive?
Right above it. If you pull out of Country Hill Estates...
Again, I'd have to, I'd be acting to look at that location from there.
I know of two fatalities right there. I also know of another fatality at the proposed second driveway coming away from Country Hill Estates, another fatality right there. For the sight vision of people coming over the hill too fast, obviously, you've done your speeds, nobody... I was gonna say, I've seen people do separate. I'm not saying it's the right calculations, but when you've done your calculations, have you done anything with the school buses in consideration now, when traffic's gonna be sitting down, the school bus, coming down one-thirty-eight at seven forty-five, eight o'clock in the morning?
It does that now, correct?
But there's no school buses right now?
No school buses at all on one-thirty-eight?
Right now, there's, there's some.
They don't stop. They don't...
There's no, when you did your study, there was no...
Oh, we did, we did all, well, first off, site distance measurements, we do, and you can do them at any time. And we look at the speed that's hurting. If you saw, we probably had two's out on the road, several days, and we look at the actual speeds that are being run over there without us there, you know, it's going forty-eight, seventy-two hours of data. We go out any time, and it's a visual, you're looking at, can I see a two-foot object at the edge of the, edge of the drive in the intersecting road? And where do I see that two-foot high object? Now, school bus is what, six, seven, eight feet high?
What I'm trying to say is, you're in a culvert with the two exits, entrances and exits. You're in a culvert, actually, and set down in the bottom of your land, dips down. So now, you're coming over the hill, or you're coming down over the hill, if this traffic stopped for a school bus, have you really considered anything of that? We've got some blind corners coming into the section.
So, I, I know that the variables that he has in his report include what he used for assumptions that will then be presented to the peer review engineer, but that's exactly the type of concern that should be directed to the peer review engineer to say, hey, guys, we have this real-world situation that we are envisioning. Can you take a look at that to make sure that the standard numbers that Mr. Scully used reflect that real-world situation? So, that's exactly the type of observation, you know, experience that there, there were fatalities at the location. We should see whether or not that, that type of information was incorporated into the report, things like bus stops. So, the more feedback we can get like that, I think it should be conveyed to the peer review expert, and then the peer review expert could say, hey, wait a second, there's a problem here. Bill will go back and look at it with the peer review expert. But I think, the thing is, all the analysis that he did was standard analysis. Two-foot object, alright, standard assumptions. Can you see a two-foot object, given the observed speeds, at the eightieth percentile of the observed speeds? And then, if it is, check the box, you move on, until the peer review expert comes along and says...
Is the boss moving, get the bus to go onto your property, I don't know, that's down the road, how we do that?
So, what usually happens is the bus company, and does Dyton have a municipally-owned bus company, or is it a private service? So, the private service determines where they feel as though the stop is safe and appropriate based on a survey of all the number of children. So, they might not be a bus stop there initially, as, as the houses get built, or the more they determine.
Okay.
Alright, so at the time, I'm going to open up to the butters. Sorry, one last time, is there any more questions or comments among the board?
I don't see plans, this, it has to do with traffic, and I'll explain it in a second, but a, a house with the children is standard when there's inclement weather for the bus stop, correct? You have no plans for that, like we've done with the other fortyBs? And when we did the previous fortyB for that area, I know it wasn't you, I don't know if you guys remember, didn't we have the bus coming in and turning around at a cul-de-sac? So that it wasn't stopping on one-thirty-eight? Right. Can something like this be proposed, so when we eliminate a bus stop on, on one-thirty-eight? Do you want to mean this?
No, I, I, that actually makes sense. I mean, trying to determine whether or not there's an appropriate turnaround, but we do have two entrances, that's, that's potentially feasible, but I think ultimately, the bus company makes that determination. If the board were to look at this plan after hearing from its traffic peer review engineer that there may be an appropriate place on-site, if you floated that as a condition, then we could take it back and analyze it and say, hey, yeah, that could work as a condition.
So, that's definitely... That happens, and the, and the bus is gonna go into the project and, and turn around. Are you opposed to building a housing unit for the children?
No, a bus stop, it's, it's something very common, and it's just, you know, as the plans develop, that type of detail is, is added, and it's definitely...
Right. Okay, so before I open up to the public, just so you guys know, if you could please state your name, and sign in on the sheet, and put your address, this is all just for the public record.
Mr. Chairman, one more point order. I don't believe we actually set a date and time for the site, so we discussed the logistics.
Not yet.
Were you at the end of the meeting?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So, just assign in your name and your address, please state for the record.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chairman, just so that, so that everyone's aware, we're talking about the buses and coming in and out. There are two other developments in this town that this developer has already completed, or one is almost complete, the other one is completed. And when we've discussed buses, while the developments were under construction, all of the buses for all grades stayed on Pine Street only. They couldn't go in the developments because the developments were under construction. And keep in mind that development for construction for buses to go in and out could be several years. Having said that, now that the developments are both, one's completed and the other one is mostly completed, the elementary school buses do come into the development and actually stop in front of every individual home at both developments. The middle school and the high school buses still stay in Pine Street for those little, you know, the bu, the bus houses at the end of the development. But the elementary schools do come in and make the entire loop. I don't know if that's determined with the bus company privately, or between the school department and the bus company, but there is door-to-door service for the younger kids.
Okay, thank you. So, just so everyone is aware, it's about eight-twenty-five, around nine o'clock approximately, if the butters have all felt this spoken, is when we will start to talk about the, our new, our new concerns for the potential new proposal, so to speak. Just so, I just don't want to feel that anyone in the public has been cut off, but we do have to allow time for us to consider what they have said, to apply to our findings for them. So, if there's anyone left to come up, just one at a time. Again, your name, you don't have, you don't have to state your address, but if you just wanna at least, please sign in with name and address, and then state your name into the microphone, just for the record, thank you.
My name is Samantha Trojan. I'm wondering if the school committee or the school department has been consulted, excuse me, on this project? At all, and if not, why?
Now, I know, Margarita, just correct me if I'm wrong, for fortyB, the state says that it is up to these schools to comply with the town's needs, not something so much of the developer, it's something that they present to the school committee. The school committee is the one that tells the town the infrastructure and how that should be adapted to the development.
Sorry, I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing everything that's being said in the van, so...
She just wanted to know about the school committee and the school department?
Yeah, I mean, you can hear this way, I'm just...
Um, and just, and how they, and how, if they've addressed it, and how they go about addressing it in the future?
So, typically, the zoning board of appeals will be sending information to all of the town boards and commissions, including the school department, to provide any comments. I'll make sure that if it hasn't done so, that it does include the school department, because that's usually done. The town can't, can't deny a fortyB development because of increased impact to the school system. They have an obligation to assimilate whatever increased impact to the school system in terms of numbers of students. But there certainly is information the school department can provide some good guidance on, particularly things like bus stops, safety, thinking about planning and phasing for purposes of safety, safety of students and residents, and especially now that they've been working with some ongoing development over a number of years. So, if, if they haven't provided those comments, it might also be due to the fact that at least initially, as this has gone, gotten started, we've been in summer session, and I know school committees will tend to meet more regularly as soon as school comes back into session. So, I anticipate those comments will still be coming in, and obviously, this public hearing is still open to receiving all of those comments.
So, has there been a notice sent to them to provide comments?
I don't believe so, I don't know. No, and on my own, there is no...
We need to get the whole process together before we submit this school committee. We don't know what we're actually building there.
Okay, so, we'll be...
Yes.
Okay. And then, I've heard some comments about, you know, targeting empty nesters and older people. I mean, are these one-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments? I heard this in regard to like the water situation.
At this moment in time, you haven't been hearing the state about, they're gonna bring some designer homes. You were asking about the places, see with everyone, multi-family homes, things like that. He's gonna bring a few designs in at that point. That point's open to the public, you can see, with all of these things. Until he raises the design, we put on some answers, how many people are living in, it's gonna look forward and keep that, and keep that, until we see the design, and it's just a whole, and hearing everybody's input, questions, concerns, and write down, we'll have all these answers after, if you want me to.
Okay, and then, in regard to the site, whatever you call it, the study line?
The site line for the bus, for the, on the...
Right, so I live at seventy-eighty-four Somerset Avenue, so I, my kids get on the bus. The bus stops only opposite side of the road, and I've had grievances about it because there is a blind spot, and I can't see anybody coming up that hill. There is a hill there, and I would guarantee that there's not enough, like, there's not four-hundred-and-fifty feet. I'm positive there's not. So, I have experienced that, and it's a concern every single day. And the bus, the privately-owned, you know, bus department hasn't made any adjustments. So, there's that. I'm wondering if the police department or the fire department, whomever would be in charge of determining whether or not that's a safe entry and exit, has been consulted? Have they been consulted?
Yes, they have been contacted, we haven't had any official findings from them yet. Again, that's something, when more concrete plans come into play, they will be submitting their, their feedback. We, they are one of the most important, I mean, everybody was important, but that's a huge point for us that we have to consider, and will consider their input. But, we haven't had any kind of formal submission from them yet at this time.
Okay, and then, when will this be heard by the, I, you may not know, but, by the conservation commission? When will that happen? Is that, it just in procedure-wise, that?
Yep, so they have been contacted, I mean, we haven't heard anything from them directly as to when they are planning on putting it on their agenda. That is something that I would say, until we hear otherwise, us to station for the town website and, and Facebook, and any kind of postings and groups that they have, to see when they post their agendas and when they'll be discussing it. But they haven't told us any concrete dates as to when they do plan on discussing it. That'll be up to them, and how often they meet, and why else it's on their agenda.
Okay. Then Will, I'm gonna, I have to go, but I can just contact you and get the site, is it D?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
If, if you feel comfortable, if you don't wanna put it on that sheet, you don't have to, but if you wanna leave us with your, your phone number, if that's how you'd rather be contacted, that's fine. Or email, whatever way you prefer to contact.
I'll just contact the zoning board.
Okay, sure, that's fine.
Alright, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Bob Perry. Correct a statement made earlier. On Pine Street, the elementary school bus does not go up Silly Way. Now, Silly Way was accepted as a town road during this past school year, but the elementary school bus does not go up that road as of the end of school year. So, to the point of, I think that needs to be considered if this new development is to go forward. We shouldn't have kids getting on the bus, particular elementary school kids, getting on the bus on one-thirty-eight. But, just to correct that point again, the elementary school bus does not go up Silly Way. Kids get off on the end of the road on Pine Street. Thank you. No, again, it does not because I pick up my grandson every day there and they drop the kids off on Pine Street. Okay, you're welcome.
Is it all he has? So is there anything else? That's it? Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard?
Good evening, Dave Rose, I'm with the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'm also a member of the Town and Watershed Alliance and I think we have another member this evening that may want to speak. We also have a representative of the Native Indian population, Mr. Gray, is that right? Who may want to speak this evening? I've heard, what I've heard this evening is just so much wrong, it's hard to know where to begin. But I noticed that the board members were very careful in many of their responses and inquiries. So thank you very much for that. It shows a great deal of thought and I really appreciate that. I would ask the town's attorney to send a letter to the governor and ask relief from the, from the town of Dyton having to be subject to 40B housing at all going forward. There's just so much wrong here and it's completely out of control. So it's, again, I'm not going to say if you're holding this, it's just so, so much is so wrong, it's difficult to know where to begin. We had a gentleman talk about traffic patterns. He talked about government studies. I, I don't know about you, but you know, I've worked for the government a long time and I'm not sure I want to bet my life on anything the government has to say. So, and he talked about models and assumptions. He didn't really tell you what the estimates, what the assumptions were that support the estimates other than a homogenized model from across the country. And I would suggest to you that Dyton is not, is not like Arizona. Dyton is not like Alaska. Dyton is not like Wyoming. Dyton is not like Cambridge, Massachusetts. So if he has some models that are much more specific to us, then perhaps he'll listen. But we're still, you know, at, at a much higher level, so much has gone so wrong. It's, it's hard to imagine how to even begin to fix this problem. So I have to say that hearing the attorney speak and some of the others, I, I imagine myself for a moment to be in a, a town in Poland in 1944 when some gentleman in a dark suit with silver trim stands up and asks the local town committee which color he'd like the train painted so they wouldn't object to people being transported across Poland.
Can we focus on the 40Bs and talk about...
All right, so I'm just saying here, yes, thank you. I'm done. And, and I just appreciate your questions, your inquiries, but they're, they're so misrepresenting what is happening. I'll mention the homeowners association represents another level of government. You have no idea what that homeowners association is going to vote for. They may vote not to display the American flag in any of the homes in that. So I suggest, I am encouraging not to accept anything that involves a homeowners association. Thank you.
I'll sign in with Mr. Rose, brings a clipboard back. Hello, my name's Brian Vassar, now resident of Dyton. This is my first official Dyton meeting, thank you. And I want to thank the board also. You, you had some great questions. I was very happy to hear that my town board asked many of the questions that I was thinking of myself. So does that mean, listening to everybody on both sides here, does that mean the town's position right now is that we can take a 5% increase in water draw from the town system?
At this point, yes.
You believe that's possible and won't affect supply of clean water or hydrogen pressures? Everyone says, and your engineers have confirmed what they said?
They have not confirmed yet. We're pending water flow tests and all that stuff in, in October.
And, and unlike some people, I very much trust scientists. I, I am one myself. And I, I'm, I'm happy to hear that we have some peer review processes going on because we just came off a very wet spring and we're in a partial water bin. So that, that's, that's sort of interesting. Maybe we're just being conservative.
I'm concerned about that, though, why we have that, is that we have plenty of water, but the fact of making clean water every day for all the residents and everything like that.
So that may be the, the limiting factor of a 5% increase if we had, these are three-bedroom apartments and they fill every one of those, assuming two, one, one, that's four people times 94 was the original when I did my town preparation. So that's approximately a 5% increase in town population. So can we make 5% increase our water, clean water output by 5% at the completion of this? So that was one question I had. The other question I had was with the traffic, and, and I do work with models, I'm cool with models and, and I trust the government more than most anything else. My question though is, I hope these models aren't based on hundreds of data points, but hundreds of thousands if not millions of data points. Because those who work with population models know that all of them are wrong, but some of them are useful. So it's nice that we have ideas of who's going north and south. And 35 cars added to either side of Center Street light, that's a big deal. If, if you count how many cars there now in peak traffic. But we, but that's 138 and Center Street. So Center Street in the evening is quite a miserable light to get stuck at now too. So that would be my other question. What is the effect right there? I think that's going to affect a lot of town people. Moving quickly, you mentioned, Mr. Karen, quickly a map from NHTSP. That's the Massachusetts Natural Heritage and Dangerous Species Program. So that's a priority habitat map, I'm sure. And I bet you that property, now that I've seen it as a map for at least box turtles and spotted turtles, I hope either you or working with the conservation commission is going to require some mitigation around, not only during construction, but around these roadways, underpasses and exclusion zones. Those are both protected species in the state. And I, I really hope to be at this site walk because I want to see what's on that property myself. I'm very well versed in walking through brushers. Those may have been all my questions. I thank the board for their time.
Sure, thank you. Anybody else who would like to be heard?
My name is Roger Rayfarns-Desroches. I'm with the Royal House of the Pocanookets, that is Massasoia tribe and, and also the Pocanooket Nation. My concern is that it could possibly have been a village up there 7,000, 8,000 years ago. There were many villages in this town. And we are doing research now to make sure there wasn't one there and we will be going further researching. And I would highly recommend that when they start moving the earth, that they have an archaeologist there. This whole area is very sensitive to the American villages.
Just so you know, that is part of the, one of the things that are required to submit. They are supposed to go forward the Mass Historical Commission and to, and the Heritage and to have them give some finding as to what that part of the state has to say about the land as well too. So that is something that they do have to, have to submit to us as well.
Ed Bell, Ed Bell, that's head of Mass Historical. I called up, but he's, he's on vacation right now. He's not coming back until the night of September. And we'll talk to him there. And in the meantime, we're going to continue with our research. I thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, are you signing? Do you have your hand already? Thank you. Before we turn over to the developer to address any of the town's concerns, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? So you can't hear in the back there? Excuse me, sir, in the back. Did you want to speak?
Yes, thank you.
It's all right.
I was going to ask, when was the water table?
Oh, here's, I'll, I'll use the microphone, sorry, thank you.
Hello, my name's John Forn and when was the water tables checked? The time of the season, was it a wet time? Was it January? Was it? Yeah, I'm just curious. One actually did the testing for all the, for the groundwater.
Okay, sure.
Thanks.
Sir, if you could just sign in your address, thank you.
So the engineers can point out, the plans that are available online do include all of our soil logs, which are holes that we, we dig in the soil to determine the soil characteristics of where seasonal high groundwater is. It's not necessarily done during any particular time of the year. Seasonal high groundwater is determined based on lines that you can see in the soil that are caused by rust. They're called models. So we use those lines in the soil to determine where seasonal high groundwater is year after year after year. So it's not necessarily done during a particular time of year, but you can look at the information to see exactly when those soil tests will be completed.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who would speak? Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Dennis Murphy from Ollon on behalf of the Country Hill and other voters. I, I didn't hear mention when you were discussing correspondence received, a letter that I submitted and I wondered if that was provided to the board by the clerk.
It, it was, yes, we do have it, yeah.
I, I did also hear, and I apologize, that I didn't get it to you until Monday. You had asked for it at the last hearing and as I was preparing for my week, I realized I hadn't done it. In the future, I'll try to have things to you sooner so that you don't have to have time pressure.
It's just because of the length of the document. We appreciate you want all kind of feedback, but in order to have, some of us who have full-time jobs in the family, we just need a more time.
Sure, understood.
Thank you.
Look, my real takeaway is that in order to do an evaluation of what's going to fit on this site, you've got to know what's there. The plan that you have, that's the approved O-RAD, there are, there are two things that happen in the wetland permitting arena. One of them is you can confirm resource boundary lines. And that's what you do on a plan. That is just, you know, setting, we're agreeing publicly for three years. This is where the boundaries are. The limits of an O-RAD are that the conservation commission only confirms the wetlands that the applicant asks for. In this case, they asked for the, what are called jurisdictional, that is wetlands that are governed by the State Wetland Protection Act. And they include things like bordering vegetated wetlands, BPWs, and certain other things. I don't dispute that those lines are accurate as shown on the plan. What I referenced last time and what I submitted to you a few days ago is the commission's own finding, its own report that says, literally checks a lot that says inaccurate. And that may be misleading, so let me be clear. I'm not suggesting that the applicant has done anything that's inaccurate on the plan. What's inaccurate is the plan contains wetland, I'm sorry. The site contains wetlands that aren't shown on the plan. Now, let me just explain with wetlands, the second thing that conservation commissions do. So one is they confirm boundary lines on a plan called an O-RAD. They also approve work near wetlands and that's done through an NLI process. Now, applicants have the ability to elect how and when they choose to ask for wetland permits. In this case, two years ago, or almost two years ago, they asked for the delineation and they got their O-RAD, which shows certain of the wetlands on the site. What they haven't done yet, what they must still do, is go through the NLI process at the conservation commission. In the meantime, they will be asking you to waive certain local wetland protections. My point is that in order to make a, a good judgment about whether those sure or can be waived, you need to know what they are and where they are. Now, if I hadn't been through this myself on this same site, I wouldn't be so emphatic about it. And in other communities, frankly, it has successfully been done the way they're proposing it, where they come in with an O-RAD and that just tells you where certain lines are. And then they get a comp form and then they go back to the CONCON for an NLI. So I'm not, there's nothing unlawful or unreasonable about that per se. What is unreasonable is for this town, which spent a lot of money on the last iteration of the project from a different developer, these guys have nothing to do with that. Because the board, probably before any of you were on it, didn't go through the, the process that I'm recommending, which is get a wetland plan that shows everything, including the wetland resources that you're going to be asked to waive that are only protected on your, on your local bylaw. The reason to do that is if you're going to be considering different iterations of the project, different types of housing, location, you first have to know where's the wetland, what kind of wetland is it, what is the applicable buffer? Is it 25 feet? Is it 100 feet? All of that information. The only thing that you have now on the O-RAD are things that you have no power over anymore. Those are state-regulated resource areas. You couldn't waive them if you wanted to. So that's my position on the wetlands. I, yes, sir?
A lot of the future's arguing about right here, there's really nothing to do with zoning part of our project. That's conservation. Their biggest hurdle is going to be conservation. Which they still gotta overcome on that matter. So I appreciate everything you're bringing towards, but that's not what the zoning that we're here for today. I understand what you're up against and I understand what you're talking about and why you brought it to our attention on that, but that's a conservation and not a, not a zoning matter. We're the pools out. Unfortunately, this is the way the process works before it gets to conservation. I understand we're trying to stop before it gets there, we can't, and that's for conservation and so.
Well, I don't need to suggest that you would stop.
I understand what you're saying, but bringing everything back to this is supposed to be group and start again. That would be something that Bishop and the attorneys knew, that is for them, we have to go in front of conservation. Hold your case for them in front of that matter. So we're talking about front pools, locations of wetlands, setbacks of wetlands, things like that, it's all conservation. What we do on this board is strictly, as you well know, is setbacks of properties, how big the house lot's going to be, how big the roads will be, how wide the sidewalk's going to be. That's what we're going to be trying on this project.
Yes, and you raise a good point because in that consideration, one thing that you ought to know is, does the road go through a buffer zone? And right now, the plan that you have doesn't show all the information that you would need to know. Now hopefully, when you ask for comments from the conservation commission, they might actually shed more light on that. They certainly know the site better than anybody. If I could just turn to a couple of other things very quickly. On, on the issue of the sewer, which just came up tonight, one thing I can tell you is that given the size of the project, you're, you're talking about, you know, flows of above 31,000 gallons per day, which if you peak it, is 124,000 gallons. It's a significant size. Consideration perhaps by the sewer department ought to be given to how INI is to be mitigated under state law. Any new connection over 15,000 gallons per day requires at least a four to one mitigation of INI inflow and infiltration. And if, if the sewer department is going to retain its own engineered new capacity, that's something you might ask that infrastructure engineer to, to calculate. The, the point that, that the gentleman just made about the archaeology. This morning I was actually on a site visit with an archaeologist for another 40B project and my one comment about that, I, I don't represent those folks, but it's very inexpensive and very easily done. If you have the applicant's permission, you can retain an archaeologist for $119 an hour. The guy was there for one hour with his metal detector and his probe. And my, my recommendation is that's something that you could find out now. And if there is a, what they call a culturally sensitive site, you can mitigate by having it excavated early on, protected. Because the problem is once plans are approved, it becomes increasingly difficult to, to do that. difficult to do that. Unless there are any questions, that's all I have.
Anything here, everyone? Board? All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so is there anything specifically the developer would like to answer to any of the Butters' concerns, or any of the other findings that we have tonight, before we discuss any potential new design plans?
No, I think you can just assure everyone, we're continuing to listen, and as we said at the beginning, the plans are likely to continue to evolve, and we'll listen to what the board has to say about potentially evolving for something that moves, different building typology.
Actually, one question I have regarding your application. The component having to do is submitting to the Mass Historical and the Heritage Committee, what was submitted in our binder was just the fact that you guys had submitted an application to them, have you heard anything back from them at all?
No, we haven't received anything back.
Okay. Okay, so at the time, this time, before we ask the developer, I don't want to send it, to go back to the touring board with any potential new plans, what should we be considering, I want to hear everything that we can, just so when they leave here tonight, they have a very clear idea of what it is that we are looking for. Is there anything specific? Yeah, just anything specific that we want the developer to take into consideration when devising a new plan for new housing types? Because this is going to drastically change, I mean, not in engineer, but what we have before, so I think it's something that the board should be considering as to what it is we are asking of them to include in those new plans, and what factors we want them to be addressing. Just make sure you have a microphone, John, this one, we'll get one down to you.
So, if you're going to consider other proposals with regard to that same site, what I'd like to know are a number of things. First of all, if you're proposing other types of units, what are the other types of units? Are they going to be townhouses, are they going to be condominiums? Will all of these be for sale units, or some be rental units? What percentages you would propose for each component of the project to be 40B, in terms of the affordable numbers, the 25% cap, or are you going to go 30, 20 in another area to try and make that work? Obviously, what would the cost factors be for potential rent, and as well as what you're looking at for figures for the affordable units? If that might change in terms of this, whether you're looking at one large development with different types of components to it, or you're looking at several smaller developments now with different homeowners associations, and how that linkage would happen in terms of common area and common space, including the roads and so forth. I'd also be looking at the types of units that you're suggesting for seniors, potentially, which means, are you looking at a single floor, are you looking at two or three, four units depending upon height restrictions, with elevator or stairs only? How that's going to affect potential ramp space, in terms of what might be needed for housing for people with disabilities or for seniors as well? Whether that's going to affect the size of the unit, how that would affect parking and drive-up for those types of units because of people with disabilities or seniors who can't get to, you know, a driveway that were parking lots further away potentially? Those are just some of the things that I would want to know if you're looking for something like this. Would you be able to, for example, if you're considering a development that is going to have some specific aspects towards seniors as the population in town gets older, does that mean, are you looking for a specific area of the development to set aside for seniors, which would be on one level easier for them to navigate, but on the other level, they may not want to be isolated out? Something to think about. Same thing for units that have disability access potentially. Are you willing to make certain types of units in each of your types of developments accessible for people with disabilities? And I don't mean somebody like myself who's visually impaired necessarily, but people who might need wheelchair access. Are you willing to consider specifically making any of your units available for current town residents or future residents who might need mobile wheelchair accessibility? Because that means everything in the unit is, I'm sure you know, changes in terms of size and space and doorways and so forth. Those are just a few of the questions I have. I could keep on going, but I gotta stop someplace.
Okay, and Margaret, is there anything you wish to share this time?
I'm gonna wait and see where the developer is, I've certainly taken notes, and I have my own set of questions that I'll share with the board at the time that we're ready to have more of a concrete plan in place.
All right, Peter, anything you want to add? Michelle? Jason?
I mean, if we want to, I'm sorry, do we want to, I would like to see a plan, any potential plan that includes townhomes.
Townhouses, ten hours, I want to make sure, yeah.
I'm not opposed, I'm not for, I just want to see what it would play out and look like. But at the same time, I also would like to see, going back to the wetlands, I'm kind of not confused, but I want to know more where the wetlands are on that whole property, on all, all the areas, and see where that lines up with all the other potential areas where we could townhome or single town, whatever.
Right.
So, I mean, as Attorney Mitchell pointed out earlier, the developer has this sort of chicken and egg problem, okay? Before we develop a plan with any level of specificity, we want to know whether or not we're going in the right direction. So the very simple question that we would present to the board, and the very signal we would like to hear from the board is whether there is a consensus in town, feeling in town, or identification of a local need or local concern to vary the type of housing typology that you have in Dyton. Does Dyton generally, or is the signal from this board, or is this board's feeling generally that Dyton could use a few more townhomes, Dyton could use a few more condominiums? If we get that very basic signal from the board, then I think at that point, we might go in that direction and present a plan, and start to go off on that tangent, and develop a plan that addresses those, and then addresses all the detailed questions that Mr. Gale had. So it's that very basic question. If there's no interest in varying housing typology, we won't go in that direction. We didn't propose that, and that's the trick that Attorney Mitchell pointed out, we can only propose one plan at a time. So the plan before the board is single family. The feedback we received from various town officials, at least preliminarily from a few members of the board, is, yeah, there might be a need for varying housing typology, whether it be condos, whether it be townhouses, you know? And then, if there is a desire for it, we'll go in that direction.
I know for me, there is absolutely a desire for that, it's something as I'm, you know, in my late twenties, I'm considering, yeah, there are people like myself who want to settle in town, and there's also elderly who wish to stay in town. So I definitely am looking for something that is geared towards both. I know in the past, I'm not trying to think about past developments, but people consider, oh, what if it's all 65 and older? Like, to me, that's not anything that's viable right now, I would want people to come into town as well, we have to keep, you know, the cycle going. Before I be more specific, I guess my question is, what exactly are cottage-style homes? That's one thing that Mallory has listed, and I know Fisher has expressed that as well, I'm just, for my ignorance, I'm just not exactly sure what a cottage-style home is.
I can give my understanding of it, but I'd prefer Fisher describe what that type might be.
Okay, thank you.
Cottage-style home, and I'm happy to, once we make a, and thank you for the opportunity to present the proposals, but once we make that presentation or the proposal to you, we'll show you pictures and websites that you can go to, projects that we have done. A cottage-style home is a home, a single-family condominium, that has, it's a single family, but it's on a commonly-owned property, land, and it has an outside, outdoors patio, fenced-in patio, so that the homeowner can go, does not have to maintain his lawn, or, but yet they have outdoors facility. It's very much similar to the Methodist camp in Martha's Vineyard.
Oh, okay, okay.
Where you have, you have, you know, you have a home, it's single, you're not touching the neighbor, but you are, your next-door neighbor's 15 feet away. It's a house that's been very prevalent out west, that's making its way here. We have actually three projects, developments like that going on right now. And I'm happy to, you can, I'm happy to address it, you can drive by and see them, I'm happy. Also, we have a fly-in video on it, that we give you a website, you can go see it online, and we will share all that information with you. And in addition to the townhouses and the condos, I think it makes for a nice, more vibrant, more dynamic mixture in the neighborhood.
That's what I'm looking for, I know I can speak on behalf of the board, but I certainly am absolutely for more of a dynamic mixture, not just for the aesthetic appeal, but as to the different types of people that are looking to purchase and stay in town.
So I think that, first of all, part of it, I said this at the last meeting as well, so if those of you who are here last meeting heard this, in terms of, as they say, full disclosure, I've only been in this town for a few years. I did come into the town through a 40B development process, and that worked, and has worked very, very well for me and my family. Having said that, just so that everybody is aware, I will also say that for the purposes of these hearings and everything that is being done, I am not a voting member, as a member of the committee, I have a right to participate and ask questions, but I have accused myself from that process because I've come into the 40B process, and it's important to make that distinction, at least for me. Having said that, I think it's also important for people to realize, the question that was just asked by the attorney was the type of housing that the town needs or might be looking for. And there's a report that we have to fill out every so many years for the state called SURFIT, it's a SURFIT report, which is, oh my gosh, I think this one is 100 pages, but basically, it talks about the population growth of the town, the way the town is heading in terms of age factors, things like that. So what's become clear is that the age of the town in terms of its residents is, for every single day, literally, we're getting older and older. The population of the town is older, there are a large number of seniors in the town, there were a very large number of people in the town who are veterans as well. In some cases, it's disproportionate to a lot of other towns, which is not a bad thing, but there are a lot of veterans in the town who are going to be needing other forms of housing because they can't maintain their homes. There's only a small number of senior housing right now in the town, as people know, public housing in this town is at a minimum right now, everything's built, there are nowhere else for those seniors to go. There are also people who sell their homes in this town right now who are seniors, or older, or have disability, there is nowhere for them to go in the town that they can afford. So when we look at the SURFIT plan for 40B process, keep in mind that, whether we like it or not, every single town in the Commonwealth ultimately has to meet a 10% goal for affordable housing through the 40B process, one way or another. Every time we add 100 people to the town, or 10 people to the town, or so many homes to the town, that just puts us further and further away from that target. We're under the gun in that if we don't work towards achieving those targets, then we run the risk of losing other services and resources from the state and potentially even to federal government. So whether the town likes the concept of these types of projects or not, the town is bound by having to accept these types of projects, some residents like it, it's more diverse.
Excuse me, John, but I think, I just, I understand the point you're trying to make, but we do have to, I do want to stick to making sure the developer has a clear.
I think what I'm trying to say to the developer is, the question was, you know, what type of housing are you looking for? So if you keep in mind the types of things that we have to consider in the future for the town development, hopefully that gives you an answer to what type of doing that we'd like to see.
Is there anything more you're looking for us?
No, I got a good sense from the chairman and Mr. Gale, I heard preliminarily there was some concerns about long-term maintenance. I think.
One of my, couple of my, the other column, I don't know if it's actually two mics is correct, and that two rooms, two separate ones in one home, is that what we're looking to do? So you have, make sure.
No, again, so we haven't even come up with it yet, okay? I think if there's a desire for it, and you're, if your concern, your only concern is long-term maintenance, whatever we come back with is going to answer that, we're going to have answers for that if we go that route. And, you know, harmony amongst.
I'm just, in the town, we have a couple that I know of, so, yeah, but two mics, and this tenant over here who's a roof, this tenant doesn't do a roof, this house came to blue, this house.
Seen those houses, yeah.
It's just a nightmare, and I don't think Dyton's ready for that first one, I know I'm not.
Easily addressable in the context of this type of project.
Right, so yesterday in the townhouse, we're talking about a single-family, two-story, three-bedroom, side-by-side.
Sorry, say that again?
We're talking about a two-story townhouse.
Whatever ultimately we put on a plan, okay? It would be a condominium, okay? Or it would be subject to a homeowners association, so that one owner could not paint one side blue, the other owner could not paint it yellow, and it looks like a mishmash, okay? One roof cannot fall into disrepair. The point of cottages, okay? The owners don't have to worry about any of that, they pay their condo fee, and the condo fee takes care of the maintenance for the structural elements, the exterior appearance, all they have to do is pay their condo fee, and the paint-in is their responsibility, and, you know, the mechanics that control the house, but the visual appearance is spoken for. So if that question is resolved, do you agree generally with the typology concern of varying, okay, if we can address it? So whatever we come back with, if we were to come back with something, we'll have info on that.
Is there any more kind of direction you feel like you guys need to be, I know our answers were all kind of varied, but is there anything more specific? I mean.
No, I think ultimately, we will take that back, this has been helpful.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes.
So, just before I ask a couple of questions, or before I make up a statement about that, let me ask a couple of questions. How many members of the board have ever been or are currently, have a license as a real estate agent or broker? One, okay. So, has anybody on the board ever had a degree in marketing, or they took marketing courses as part of an undergraduate study? All right, we'll just leave that alone for a minute and say, the gentleman, whether it's houses or anything else, in a fashion, they're inviting you to join them in their plan, I encourage you to guard against them. Secondly, they're supposed to come to you and say, here's the market for housing, here's what sells, and here's why it sells, and this is why we're going to build, we are proposing to build these types of houses, and right now, I want to spit blood because I may have actually helped them. So that's what they should be saying to you, and they should be telling you why and where those types of housing are selling, and why it fits the price model that they're talking about.
And that's why we've contacted the town administrator, she's given her input, that is part of her job.
I'm sorry, you contacted who?
The town administrator, that is part of her job.
I have a great deal of respect for the town administrator, although I, you know, I have a number of disagreements with her perhaps, but I'm not sure she should be making any comments about that. They propose to be the experts, they propose to be in the business, they should be the ones telling, talking to you about that, not you talking to them about it.
Which they did, and then the town administrator, it's part of her job, it's on her end to do.
You know, I'll just add this for you as a youngster coming up, and congratulations, you know, you have your future in front of you. Part of the reason you have the restriction on the number of houses available is because there is a restriction on the size of a house lot and on fringe, on paved streets. If you remember this term, snob zoning, that's what that reflects. You do that kind of zoning to restrict growth. If you want more growth, you want to build more homes, then you have to, the town has to back away from those sort of restrictions. That will probably, if you do, wherever you can, don't probably go a long way to easy the housing market, and you may be able to jump in a lot sooner than you currently think you can. Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, so before we discuss the site, or a date for that, is there anything else before we wrap up? No? Okay, so one date that I, I'm looking at for the September 10th, which is a Tuesday, obviously the later we go into the year, the, you know, daylight is going to wrap up sooner, so I'm looking to get this done before, you know, we lose that daylight, obviously we have to consider that a lot of people who will need attention. have to consider that a lot of people who will be attending this will be working. So, yeah, September 10th, the Tuesday, at 6:00 PM, and then something that you guys spoke on behalf of before is ahead of time, trying to gather some type of a quote-unquote RSVP, so you guys know what kind of and how amount of, what amount of transportation to provide. Are you looking for a certain, like, you know, X amount of days before so you can plan? What were you thinking when you proposed that?
Yeah, well, we're going to have one car that can seat, you know, four adults. But I think if we could have people that are interested give the ZBA secretary a call 48 hours in advance, and then we follow up with the ZBA secretary the night before and say, how many people have you heard from? All right? We will do our best to accommodate.
And you're looking at just a number of residents that are looking for transportation, because some live within reasonable walking distance, obviously we don't need to hear back from them if they plan on attending. It's only those who say, I would like to go, I don't have any means of getting there, I don't know where to park.
Exactly.
Okay, so that being said, if we're looking at the 10th, 48 hours, would put us at Sunday, the 8th, obviously that's not feasible for that kind of deadline. Town Hall is closed on the 6th, which is the Friday. Looking at Thursday, the 5th, would be the deadline to contact the office manager as to, if you do plan on attending and if you need, only if you need any kind of transportation so we can get that back to them as well. Does that work for you guys?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That was in the details. I'm going to suggest that if everyone is willing, I think, to do this, I'm wondering if it's Saturday morning would be better, and the reason I'm saying that is because you have high mornings up for mosquitoes and so forth in the best periods of time. And for some of the residents, for many of the residents that might be concerned, especially if they've just come off a period of pain or something, so I don't know, residents or what you've done.
Okay, so I'm personally new to the whole 40B experience, obviously, so I don't know if typically that is something we do, so if it is on weekends, I don't know if that's something that you guys are accustomed to, what your schedules are like, and I'm not saying for or against that, I'm just curious.
It's whatever the schedule allows. Is that okay for you, Bishop? We would like to have the engineer, or one of the engineers present just to kind of identify what has been stated, because we do state the road.
Sorry, Bishop.
We're happy to also provide off-the-枱.
Okay, okay. Yes.
My suggestion that we meet at the town hall, not here.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was planning on, and that's a lot closer for, if it's just Saturday, I mean, I can't attend, I mean, as long as one, I would like at least one of the three voting members to attend, so I usually work Saturday mornings, that's a little short for me to get off and work. Will either of you be able to attend if we do a Saturday morning?
It all depends on the date, however you want.
It looks like, unfortunately, a lot of you, unfortunately, I meant to say it that way, but Saturdays are out unless we do Saturdays in October. But that's what I'm, now we're getting later into the year. That's going to be after, if you do any Saturdays in October, that's going to be after the workshop and after the last public, I mean, after the next public hearing. September 12? Well, I mean, that's a Tuesday, Thursday, we were talking about the idea of a possible Saturday, I just, I know that's.
Personally, I, personally, the 12 is fine with me, the evening is fine with me, I have no qualms about.
Okay. It looks like right now, Saturdays, Jonathan, I'm sorry, are not going to be feasible. I understand your concern.
I think the 12, we're done with it, it'll be lined up.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, that was the 10th, Tuesday. Yeah, we can do the Thursday, though.
The 12 was scheduled.
What is the 10th, sorry?
Yep, that's right, that's right, Jonathan, Jason. So the 10th, Tuesday, 6:00 PM will be the site visit. RSVP a week, Nicole would like a week before, so that would be Tuesday, the 3rd. So if we could have any residents, I'm sorry for the confusion, but Tuesday, September 3rd would be the deadline to contact the office manager if you would like transportation to the site visit. And that would be meeting at Town Hall. Bishop, for you guys, for your cars, where would we appropriate for, to meet? Yeah, where in Town Hall? I just want the residents to know where to go.
Rear entrance behind, parking lot behind.
Okay, the rear entrance, the lower rear entrance for Town Hall would be the meeting spot on September 10th, 6:00 PM for anybody who needs transportation.
We're meeting at 6:00, the site visit, we'll be at 4:00 or 6:00.
You want to, so, we begin at 6:00, 5:45, meeting at the Town Hall, and then for any residents looking for transportation.
So do we, do we have to send out notices, like formal notice requesting RSVPs, and post it, all that kind of stuff?
No, I mean, I think this is enough, just when we're stating for the public that we need the RSVP by, I mean, that's.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So tonight, the conclusion of the meeting, because that's going to be a public meeting, so it will be posted, and you can put those details in the posting. My suggestion will be that whoever will be making the motion to continue will make a motion to continue to September 10th at 6:00 PM for the site visit, RSVP to Town Hall. By September 3rd, if you need a ride and plan to meet at the lower entrance, rear entrance of Town Hall by 5:45, and to continue to September 12th for the work session, and to continue to October, I'm sorry, both of those times are 6:00 PM, and September 10th and September 12th, and Tuesday, October 15th at 7:00 PM at the Dayton Middle School for the continued public hearing. So those would be, that would be the motion I would suggest that you make. All three of those meetings will be public meetings, and they will be posted with the details.
Okay, do I have a motion, please?
I gotta repeat all that. So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Before we adjourn tonight, any more last quick final thoughts? From the public, from the, no?
I just wanted to state for the record, all of the packets that are presented here are posted on our website under the zoning board. My office has moved to the Town Hall instead of the old Town Hall. I'm sharing an office with the planning board. My office hours are from 8:00 to 1:00, but on Thursdays after meetings, I won't be there because I'm working for 20 hours. But you can always reach out to me if you have any questions coming up to any of the meetings, and I will be posting any of the meetings, site visits, and everything else outside of my office on the lower level, and also with the clerk, and on our website. So please reach out to me with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion is adjourned, thank you.